I'm going to call to order this meeting tonight. It's a joint meeting, or will be shortly, of both the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
And I'll call Finance Committee to order.
Awesome. We do have a few typical Select Board items to run through. We're going to have announcements and a review of the agenda followed by public comment. We will see time-wise whether we have a public hearing. Well, we're going to continue that public hearing for the blood farm removal permit. And then where you have the town manager's report, where we will talk about potential agenda. We will talk about six-month goals of the Select Board and hopefully give those final approval. We will review and potentially approve Select Board operational policy, standard of conduct policy, and anti-discrimination policy. We will then discuss and consider issuing a letter of support for the Hazel Grove CPA application and potentially have a discussion as to whether to create separate goals for the town manager. That will hopefully all be completed by 7:15 when we will be technically meeting in joint session to hear the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets. Following that, we have no other business. We have a few items for review and informational purposes. If there is new information, we may have some Select Board liaison reports, and then we have one set of minutes. Any announcements from folks? Yeah, go ahead, John.
Friday night at seven o'clock at the field behind the library, the Christmas tree bonfire. Everybody's invited. It's all, it in the past has been kind of like a mid-winter town get-together. So I hope I see a lot of people there.
Very good. Any other announcements? Public comment, questions? All right. Then Mark, I will turn it over to you to go through.
Okay, I'll jump to item number two, which is the board's six-month goals. If you go to page three in your packet, you'll see the goals. I sent them out to the board a couple of weeks ago just to make sure that they were in sync. I received feedback from everybody that they were, so I would ask the board to formally adopt those goals this evening.
Allison.
Yep.
These two are totally fine as written. I don't remember if we discussed, I, I remember thinking that we should have a goal in here about green communities, that either if we are not approved, we should work on a new application, or if we are approved, we should start work on the second application.
Your goals for the calendar year are still in effect until the end of June, so the green communities is still there, so you can go back to it if you need to.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I, I couldn't remember whether we discussed it or whatever. And the other comment I was going to make, I know we did talk about Boynton Meadows and decided to pull it off the bowls list. I just don't want it to disappear, so I want us to be sure that we're checking in on that.
I will schedule a time. I had a long conversation with Josh and Allison last Friday separately, not together, separately.
Thank you.
And I'm going to put it on a future agenda, so it has not been forgotten.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Would someone like to make a motion that we approve these two as presented?
I move that we approve the six-month duration goals of the Select Board, January to June 20th, 2020.
Perfect. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments?
So, thank you. So, on the policies for the anti-discrimination, standard of conduct, and Select Board operational policy, I sent these out to you this afternoon. I received an email from Becky with two minor changes that really don't change anything, but I'd asked the board to adopt them. And if you look up on the screen, the, the second paragraph on the screen that starts with "an employee, an employee may file a complaint of discrimination including sexual harassment by contact in the HR director or the town manager. If the person who's subject of the complaint is under the jurisdiction of the Select Board, i.e. a board or committee member," and we're going to add the words "or town manager, an employee or other person may file a complaint with the chair of the Select Board or the town manager as appropriate." So we're adding "town manager" in the parentheses, and at the end of that first sentence, the words "as appropriate." That's the same thing on the standard of conduct and the anti-discrimination, so doesn't change anything, clarifies it. I would ask the board tonight to formally adopt the anti-discrimination policy and the standard of conduct policy as presented, as amended this evening.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I would make a motion to approve as with the changes that we received today.
Second.
Okay. And Mark, is, just, so on the agenda, it lists the operational policy.
I'm going to do that separate.
We're going to do that, okay.
I'm going to do that separate.
Okay. Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve the conduct, standard of conduct and anti-discrimination, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
So with the operational, the board's operational policy, beginning on page 19 of your packet, as directed by the board, Select Board member Geiger and I went through them, we updated them, I sent them out to you a couple of weeks ago, I received positive feedback from all of you, but I just wanted to, I wanted to do this one separately because it is, the board did ask us to do this one separately, and we did. John, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that. If there are no questions, I'd ask the board to adopt that as presented.
What, what we tried to do was keep things in here that related directly to how the Select Board operates, and take out some of the older things that weren't applicable anymore, and, and then just tidy it up on a, on a few specifics, such as there's, there's four types of meetings we can have, and it's only talked about two. And so we, we, we fill those in. To see those, it's on page four, I think.
What page, Joe?
Page four. The special board, emergency board.
So it's page 22 of the packet.
Executive and working.
Page 22 of the packet.
Does anyone have any questions or comments after reviewing this?
I could have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't know, because probably I never read the previous policy as thoroughly as you did, the, the provision that says nobody can serve as chair for more than two consecutive years, was that in there already?
That was, that was.
Okay.
Right. We talked about how do you measure consecutive years. For instance, if this is your last year and you're the chair, and you run again, and you get to be the chair again.
Yes, well, I think those are two consecutive years.
Second time around, that's two consecutive, even though there was a break and another vote.
Right.
Yeah, so we talked about that a little bit.
Okay. I mean, these, like any other policy, if there were some reason to, we could vote, I think, a majority, or vote to wait, or to change something, so it's not. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve the operating policy?
I move we approve the upper Select Board operational policy, is that what it's called?
As presented.
As presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All righty. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to, oh, that leaves two policies left for the Select Board to finalize. That's your meeting on holiday policy and your naming of boards, naming of parks and commons.
I have an update on that latter one. Do you want me to give that right now?
Might as well.
So there were two parts to that policy. We had questions about the list of parks and commons that seemed a little bit incomplete. And then the second part of the policy has to do with the process for naming something in memorial, in, in memory of someone. I did receive a very thorough and detailed list of all of the properties under the Parks Department jurisdiction. It's actually a two-page, small print list, which I will ask Mark to distribute to everybody. I think that answers the questions that we had on the front, on the first half of the policy. The Parks Commission came to our previous meeting and asked that they be included. We agreed that they should be included in any discussion of change of the naming part of the policy. My suggestion was going to be that we put this on the agenda for later in January, and that with the board's permission, I can reach out. I've had some conversation already with members of the Parks Commission, and maybe we can together work out that, there seem to be some discrepancies in the naming policies, and maybe we can clean that up and have something ready and bring it before, but both boards would be here for the discussion. So I would suggest we do that for the last week of January, because I know we're pretty busy already next week.
I can do that.
Is that all right?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I think there's one other one, and that's the town manager's performance evaluation. We haven't closed that up yet.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, I forgot about that. That's my favorite policy, John.
I know.
I know. I can't believe I forgot it.
Oh, and also, I'm sorry. I was going to suggest that we revisit the committee vacancy appointment policy and make the possible change I had suggested at our meeting last week, that if we are going to reject, if we're, if we are not going to accept the recommendation from the committee, that we make that decision, but that we hold the interviews at another meeting, not that very same night. And I think we should put that into the policy.
I can add that to a future agenda.
We should consider putting it into the policy and amending it, and maybe we should do that.
I can add that to a future agenda.
Yeah, I can work with you on some more.
Absolutely. So, once that's done, I've been working with the town clerk, and we are going to add all the policies online under E-code, so that people have access to the Select Board policy. So I'm really excited about that. That was a suggestion that John had, and I think it's a, I think it's a good suggestion. Allison, I would ask the Select Board to open a public hearing. The Select Board has scheduled a public hearing for Monday, January 6, 2020, at 7:10 PM in the second floor meeting room of Groton Town Hall, 173 Main Street. Groton to consider request for the renewal of an earth removal permit for blood farm on parcel 15 assessors map 106. All interested parties are in coverage to attend. I'd ask the board to open the hearing.
So, we open the public hearing on the blood farm, earth removal permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd ask the Select Board to continue the hearing to 6:15 next Monday, January 13th. The Stormwater Committee was not able to meet, they didn't have a quorum, and we don't act on a permit like this until we get a recommendation from them. They are scheduled to meet tomorrow night?
Yes.
They're scheduled to meet tomorrow night, so I'll have a recommendation for you for next week. So I'd ask the board to continue the hearing to next Monday at 6:15.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the earth removal permit for blood farm to Monday, January 13th at 6:15 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to relinquish my chair for one second and ask Lori to come up and sit here so she can be on the microphone to talk about the next subject, which is the Hazel Grove.
Where is this in our packet, roughly?
It's up on the screen, it's on page.
Twenty-five.
Thank you.
And that actually, I'm sorry, I'm Laurie Smigelzki, and I'm with Hazel Grove Association, and I'm the president. We have the lease with the Town of Groton Park Commission to manage the Groton Fairgrounds. We've, we're into our second lease cycle. Our first lease was for three years, and now we're into another five years. I have my board members with me here as well. The application that's up here is just the summary. The one I have in front of me is the, the current one, which was due January 2nd, that has actual numbers, and I can get that to you with photographs as well. I did not bring copies with me for you.
Okay.
So let me do a quick summary here. We're dealing with some, a couple aged buildings that need some work, and the total project request that I am asking for, for CPA funds is 9,200, and we're going to have somebody that will donate $2,600 in labor, okay, to do the work. It's not doing all the work. So there's a shed that is used for the farrier shed, people to tack up their harness horses. I have some old historic signs that came off the exhibition hall, like 4-H signed and other signs like that, that I store in there. It needs a new roof. I want to restore and put electricity back in there, and put two windows that we can really lock, okay? And then there's the viewing tower that's in the infield, okay? And that's where for, when like Pony Club is there, or shows are held there, judges can go up and they keep a good eye of what's going on in the infield. Now, I don't know if any of you guys, if you know about the fairgrounds or not, there's a racetrack there, there's barns, there is an infield that has cross-country jumps, it has two rings, one's a larger ones, one's a smaller one. So what we're trying to do is use this as a capital improvement on these two buildings. So the, the shed itself, I just explained the other, the tower, it needs a new roof. The current siding on it, we want to replace the siding and fix the floor on the first level. The second level was done previously when Mike Kinney was here, we replaced the second floor. That one's good. It used to have drop-down windows that we can enclose the whole thing and keep it locked up when, when it's not in use. We'd like to replace those and put a door on there so we can lock it up and store stuff that we use down there in the winter. We're not using in the winter, we store it in the winter, and then to keep people out so it's not misused. So this is why I've come to you, to see whether you guys think this is a project that you might want to get behind for support. You know, we're trying to slowly improve. We've made huge improvements down there already, huge improvements. So this is like the next step. We get our money in from boarders, users, we have members, we have 90 current members, and we have boarders that are there, we have eight, 12 horses in the winter, summertime, five in the wintertime, and then we have day users that come in, they pay a fee to use the facility. So this is where we get our income. We also have a benefit traffic every spring. And Pony Club, this is their home base, okay? And it's produced people that have gone to the Olympics. I mean, this is a facility that has been there a very long time, very long time.
What is the application?
The application in actual cash funds is 9,200.
Questions, comments, folks? Yep.
So Lori, I have been down there, although not recently, and back, you know, before your association was formed, and there was more publicity in town, and it was a little bit controversial. So I appreciate that you people have stepped up and are, are taking over the management. I would like, and I think it probably would benefit you also, some material, more information about your organization, some of the stuff that you just said.
Yep.
Because if, if this goes to town meeting, you'll need to be prepared to answer the kinds of questions like, what's this? Who, you're a 501(c)(3), what are you all about? How is Groton benefiting from this? Would, you know, why should I support this?
Right.
So, as part of coming to us, it's kind of like practice before going to town meeting.
Yeah, perfect.
I would like to see some more information of where I would go to support this.
Okay. Well, so we are a 501, we are a 501(c)(3) as of last year. So, okay, so first we're a state nonprofit, now we're 501(c)(3), and at, we have 29 members that are actually Groton residents. But this is also regional. I mean, people have been coming and using this from, from out of town forever, okay? So it, it has a great purpose, we're just trying to keep it moving forward and improving on it, making it safe like we have.
And I know Groton has a really strong history of being a horse community, where people did things with horses. And so that's another reason that I think, and I'm glad that you are still there doing that.
Yeah, and, and with our group, we kind of brought everything together as a whole unit. It's not just, these guys over here, these guys over here, we look at it as a whole unit. That's why we're trying to make improvements down on the site.
John, do you have a question there?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly support this. You know, I'm hearing that somebody's going to donate an awful lot of labor to, to help implement these things, and that's the kind of community support for these efforts that I think is really important. And the other piece that I feel important is there are several things in here that concern me about public safety. Buildings that people couldn't get into anytime tend to lend themselves to people going into those buildings and doing things that they probably shouldn't be doing. And so getting it closed up, getting the windows sorted out, doors that can be locked and so forth, I think that's important from a public safety perspective, too.
Any questions or comments, John?
Good, I'd support it also.
As do I at this point. What is, in terms of a date that you?
Well, we would like to start this summer and then be done by the fall of this year. You know, once the monies are approved, let's say it goes to town meeting and it's approved, and then when the funds are released, then we can start.
Okay. So in terms of kind of a formal vote, it sounds like Becky at least would like more information to support this.
All right, what's your timeline?
Right, I don't want to hold things up.
What's the timeline of meeting a letter of support from us?
Exactly.
Um, I have to have the final, the CPC meets January 27th, okay? And so they, they now have my application that has all the numbers and all the details. And so then our meeting is the 27th of January.
Do you need the word of sort of CPC by the 27th, is that the?
I would, yes. So maybe a couple days before.
Do you have any written material already prepared about the Hazel Grove Association?
In reference to your, this project, or?
No, just in reference to who you are, the 501(c)(3). To become, to get that certification, you must have had to give a lot of written.
Yeah, well, yes. I mean, we did get, go through the application, and yeah, so would you like a copy of things?
Well, I mean, I guess, I, I'm not asking you to, I'm just wondering if there's already something prepared, that you could give us some information about the organization and what you're doing with some of the, I don't know, some of the numbers and all before, so we could vote next week.
Sure.
In order to be ready for your.
Does your website?
You have a website.
Anything else information that you wish to put?
The website, yes.
Oh, boy. So anyone who's speaking in the audience needs to grab a microphone, just for folks at home to be able to hear. I know Anna's got her hand up as well. Thank you.
Just stepping to help Lori initially. I'm Emma Newman, District Commissioner of Groton Pony Club and clerk for Hazel Grove. We do a town report, which has some amazing information.
Okay.
It will provide all of the improvements that we've done, from the addition of new infield jumps through to, we've replaced the surface on the track, we've replaced the surface on the in-rings. It will provide information on, we hold two horse shows a year, which bring in about 100 people into the area. We provide Pony Club rally that brings in, last Pony Club rally brought in 10 teams, teams are of five, plus all the parents and the grandparents and the aunts and the uncles as these littleies compete. And Johnson's are very much on Facebook, you'll see on our Facebook and the Groton Pony Club Facebook. A lot of people stop at Johnson's or wherever as they arrive. So the Hazel Grove, we have done a lot on our Facebook site, on our website, but also we put in a town report. We also do a newsletter, which I can produce, haven't done one recently, so apologies. But yes, there is a lot of information that I can provide you, or I can provide links to, and it will give you, certainly the town report will tell you, over the last two years of town reports I've submitted, how many attendees we've had at the horse shows, how many memberships we've had, we've driven the memberships up to about 120, and how much improvements we've done down at the site. So hopefully that will provide the information that we'd see. I'll hand over to Hannah.
There was also a report to form the Hazel Grove Agricultural Association. There was, or not, but a 50-page report describing the efforts that had gone into creating the lease to the Hazel Grove from the town. That was a town-appointed committee that had been formed.
And we did an RFP.
Right.
So there's quite, there's an enormous amount of information out there.
I'll put this out next Monday.
Well, I was going to say, quick, let you spend a second, John. Becky, do you feel like this is information that you need to have to make a, to vote, or just information that they'll need to have to move forward to next steps?
I guess I'm, I guess I feel like I would be more responsible for all of us to have a little bit more information than just what's been given tonight. But backup information to detail what's been said verbally would be fine.
Okay.
I can give you a copy of my full application, which spells out a lot of this information for you as well.
Actually, you know, it's a website and, and some of the town report stuff would be fine.
Okay. John?
I'd like not, I'd like to see us not push this out. This is a really, really busy time of the, of the year for the Select Board and the Finance Committee on budget issues, and this isn't that far away when you think about meetings in between and something falls through the crack. So I, I, yes, there's a lot more information anybody that's interested can gain, but I think this is pretty straightforward, and.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion that the Select Board.
While the rest of the time, you have the word of support.
Yeah, all that stuff.
Wouldn't anyone like to second all that stuff?
I'll second this.
Okay.
Stuff.
So I will vote for this, because I certainly am not here to hold this up. I would like that town, the town report information and, I can look at the website, obviously. Just, I think in general, when we're faced with a request like this, we should have the information about what it's all about.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, thanks, guys. Keep us posted.
So I'll defer the last item in the town manager's report till after the budget presentation?
Yep.
So I would like to, with your permission, start the presentation?
Indeed. So we, just for logistical here, does everyone?
I put those in front of everybody, I put them on the chairs for people to.
Okay. Making sure.
So as, as is always the case, if you have a question as I'm going through the presentation, please interrupt me, and I'd be really happy to answer any questions that you have as we go through this. Those of you who've been on the FinCon and Select Board before, you're pretty familiar with how I do this, I like to give a little explanation of how we get to where we are, and then the actual meat of the budget. So we'll get, so we'll get started. This is the 12th proposed operating budget I put together as your town manager. It was, the budget process for this year is much different than the past years. So we actually changed the manner in which we, which we did this, and that was primarily based on the fact that our five-year projection last year showed a major deficit in FY21. And because of that, the Select Board established a working group to begin addressing the FY21 budget over the summer of 2019. A committee, a working group was made up of a member of the Select Board, a member of the Finance Committee, a member of the Groton Dunstable Regional School, actually two members of the Groton Dunstable Regional School Committee participated, myself, Patricia, and the Superintendent of Schools and the School Business Manager. We met several times over the summer to talk about the budget and to try to figure out how to address FY21's budget. So the town manager, myself, and the school superintendent, we put together three-year budget projections for FY21, '22, and '23, and we did that on sound financial principles. And based on that, the outcome of the working group anticipated a deficit of a half a million dollars in FY21, which is pretty much where we were when we put together last year's five-year projection. So it pretty much solidified the problems that we were anticipating going into FY21. So based on this work and compliance with the charter and our financial policy, the Finance Committee and the Select Board set forth their budget guidance to the town manager in October, as is required by the, by the charter. And specifically, the Finance Committee and Select Board voted that I shall provide two budgets to the Finance Committee and Select Board. The first budget being a level services budget that continues to provide the same services that the town currently receives, and then the second budget will be a balanced budget that does not require an override of Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that any deficit in the level services budget shall be offset by equal reductions to the municipal budget request and the Groton Dunstable operational budget request.
Excuse me.
Please.
This was on the screen, do we have on our?
You have a handout in front of you.
We have the handout.
Yes.
But we don't, we shouldn't be spending our time trying to find it on this screen.
No, no, no.
Thanks.
Yep. And then, of course, there should be no new benefited positions proposed in the budget. So I sent out instructions to every department head and committee requesting the budgets that maintain services at the current levels, and we sent that out on November 5th to all the departments. Once we received those, the Finance Team would then develop a level services budget, which I'm calling Budget Number One, and a, if reductions were needed in that budget, Budget Number Two would be the balanced budget. So as I always like to point out, we're a team here, we're a group, and I don't do anything alone. I have great support from my Finance Team, and that's made up of our town accountant, Patricia DeFrane, our principal assessor, Jonathan Reno, Mike Hartnett, our treasurer collector, who unfortunately is sick tonight. I don't know if the budget made him sick, but something made him sick, and so Mike's not here tonight, and of course, Melissa Doig, our human resources director, and Dawn Dunbar, my executive assistant. And this year, the town clerk participated. And this year, the town clerk participated, uh, in, in, in the budget form, uh, formulation, did I say that right? Can't talk. Uh, this year, Mike, Mike, uh, really brings an interesting perspective as an elected official and a town resident, so we appreciated him being there. And John and Bud attended all of the, uh, departmental, uh, budget meetings, uh, that we went through, which I thought was very, very helpful, uh, going through those sessions. So, some of the information that we need to be aware of putting together the budget, uh, the fiscal year twenty budget was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars under the levy limit. So, we did not spend all of the money available to us last year. New growth last year was certified at twenty-eight point three million dollars, which added five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to the levy limit, which helped create some of that, uh, surplus. Looking at fiscal year twenty-one, we're not looking at a lot of new growth. We looked at all the building permits, we looked at projects before the planning board, and just based on our, our knowledge of the way the budget works, Jonathan is not comfortable, uh, with more than fifteen million going this year. And he's here tonight, and Jonathan, I don't know if you want to add a few words to that as to why we settled in on that, especially if you have a microphone.
The basic drivers in, in growth are, are, is new construction, condos, land splits, uh, new homes, and then, uh, a secondary driver would be additions. We, we're, we're not, we're getting permits in, uh, but they're not, there's, we're not a lot of permits for new homes and not a lot of permits for large-scale, uh, upgrades to homes, big additions and stuff like that. So, and we're not, the, the planning board seems to be picking up now, but will that, will that be, uh, in time for us to capture the growth? For, see, it's really, really getting down to crunch time, so that's why, um, I estimate it to be about fifteen million. So, I'm hoping, I'm optimistic that we can hit fifteen million in growth.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
To be clear, it says FY twenty, twenty new growth was certified at twenty-eight, three million.
Yep.
Correct.
If my recollection is, we've been in the, the mid-to-high twenties now for a few years.
Yes.
You've seen the number of permit applications that come in by this time, you know, over the last several years. Are you saying that the number that have come in this year, this time is significantly down compared to the last three years?
Well, there's, there's one big factor that affected this year's, uh, growth was the measuring list that we did with the whole town. So, we captured a lot of growth, uh, through that process, about eight or nine million dollars. So, we were, I think we had budgeted maybe twenty million.
Twenty-one million we did the budget last year.
Twenty-eight, and that, that was the difference in the eight million, uh, seven to eight million was, uh, the, and we don't really know, when, when, when we do a measuring list of the town, it's over the course of a couple of years. So, we don't know when that growth is gonna, we're gonna get it in for it to hit, and it all came in at one time.
But I guess I'd repeat my question, and, and maybe you, you don't have this, this data, you don't track it and have it regularly.
Well, yeah.
But is the number of permits that you're seeing come in basi, at this time of year, different than what you've seen over the last three to five years?
Yes, I would say yes, but now, you could ask the building inspector, but I work very closely with Ed, and I, we, we can see the permits coming in because it used to be manual, now it's, we can look and see. And the, the permits that are coming in are small dollar permits and not large dollar permits. So, the, um, the per, I should have corrected myself, the number of permits may be the same, the type of permits that are coming in are different.
Not a lot of new construction, Gary. It is absolutely down, and there has been, you know, this time last year, there were two subdivisions before the planning board. The planning board has one subdivision before them this year, which is different than the years past. So, that, that gave us a little bit of pause for concern as well.
And our other subdivisions that have been constant growth for the town of, are at their end. Rockwood's, uh, West Groton, and, uh, Dave, Dave Moulton still has some, uh, going on behind the ass.
Behind shows.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Gary?
It does.
David, did I see your hand? Um, so, that's a, that's a change, and, and the five million dollars is about ninety-two thousand in growth. So, if we had budgeted at twenty million, that two sixty would be about three fifty, if that helps. So, but you know me, I'm very conservative, and I like to err on the side of caution when I, when I put those numbers together, right, Bud?
Right.
Um, so, the proposed budget, um, anticipates that state aid will be level funded at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. The government has been very consistent in support of local aid to local communities, and we, we feel comfortable, uh, that, that we'll get at least the nine seventy-one. Last year, we can get another thirty-six thousand dollars, I think. It went up thirty-six thousand, but it's so early in the process, it's, it's hard to tell what that's going to happen. The one area that really changed in, in the budget development is, is we used a different approach in the development of our local estimated receipts for FY twenty one because of the projected deficit of five hundred thousand dollars. For the last eleven years that I put budgets together for you, we've used a conservative approach in developing these estimates, which has allowed us to maintain a triple-A bond rating and maintain healthy reserves, leading to a strong free cash position, free cash position that has allowed us to, um, fund our capital projects, capital budgets for both the school and, and the town. So, that's been the way we've done it in the past. This year, based on the work of the working group, and based on the fact that we have a deficit, we decided we were gonna use, in most cases, our five-year average on the estimated receipts. Usually, we use anywhere from the five to ten-year average, but we focused on the five-year average this year. And because of that, this resulted in an eight percent increase for an additional three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars in our estimated receipts, which is the largest, largest projected increase in the last eleven years. And that does include, just so everybody knows, that does include a hundred thousand dollar increase in the meals and, and local room occupancy tax, which I'm very excited about. I'm pleased to report that we are on track, uh, right now to really bring in the money that we anticipated, uh, last year. So far this year, we've taken in over a hundred and six thousand dollars on the, uh, meals tax, based on the first two quarters, and we've taken in about thirty-five or forty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand?
I'm gonna say six thousand, and then we just got in twenty.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Yeah, so about thirty thou, yes, about thirty thousand dollars in the, um, in the local room occupancy tax. That would double next year, based on the same, because we're going from three percent to six percent. So, we're very comfortable adding a hundred thousand dollars to that particular line, and that has been a very good thing for, for the town. I wanted to give you this chart here to show you, um, that over the last five years, we've gone up, we've, we've actually decreased them one year in seventeen. We went up five and a half, five point eight-nine percent in eighteen, four point five-one percent in nineteen, and last year, we went up three point one-nine percent. This year, we're going up eight percent. So, I think that's a major increase in it, I'm a little nervous about doing it, but that's, I think we, we need to be less conservative.
So, when you say estimated receipts for each of these years, this is what you, was in your proposed budget?
Which is the proposed budget, not the final numbers that came in.
So, when you say that eight, you said you're using a five-year average?
Yes.
A five-year average of what?
What we've taken in on those categories in each of the last five years, the average income. So, for example, motor vehicle excise.
So, the four, four, nine, nine, three, nine is an average of the actual receipts from the previous five years.
Of, over the last five years, correct.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, I'd, I'd like to actually see what those actually.
Okay, we can get that, we can get that, absolutely, it's a good question.
So, that, those five years would be fiscal nineteen backward? Because twenty is still.
Twen, twenty was still, so it'd be nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen, yes.
But, just to clarify a little bit what Gary just asked, the, the estimates, which are the budget, but the estimates, those receipts, every year, um, those res, those estimates were exceeded by four to five to six hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
So, every year, we beat, those numbers were beat.
Right.
By a very large, healthy amount, which obviously.
But, because of that.
I understand.
It gave us a strong free cash position.
I agree.
That has allowed us to do capital and allowed us to do other things, so, and I'm very leery changing that practice. And when Wall Street came in to review us on our bond, on our bond rating last year, they specifically mentioned the conservative manner in which we budget. And the conservative manner has led to strong free cash position, which has given us that triple-A bond rating. We're deviating from that process in this budget.
Totally agree, but if the four, 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 nine, nine, three, nine is the average of what we did the last five years, that implies that some of those years were higher than that.
That is correct.
The numbers were, I have them. Fifteen, sixteen was four, two, nine, one.
Yep.
Seventeen was four, one, eight, six. Eighteen was four, nine, five, seven. Nineteen was four, seven, three, zero.
So, that's right, right about four point four nine.
So, they.
Those were the actuals.
Those are the actual, and the average about four point nine.
Compared to those budgets, and that's the, the statement we just made, this runs about six hundred thousand over the budget, but like, also, that gives us free cash to fund our big stuff.
Correct. But, but Gary, answer your question, that, you can see from the numbers that Bud just gave you, that is the, uh, the five-year, um, average, and that's what we did. Um, please, please.
Mary, can you just grab the microphone, I'm sorry? No, more just specifically.
For the last eleven years, the conservative approach, if you weren't going based on actuals, what was the difference in how you were, what was your conservative approach?
That we.
And I'm new, so I.
No, it's a big question, no.
I totally know the answer.
We usually kept estimated receipts within a hundred thousand of our previous year's appropriation, which generated, and as Bud said, we would come in about five hundred thousand dollars under that, which ended up going to our free cash and certifying free cash. A couple of things, though, in the numbers that Bud gave you, and was it nineteen, Patricia, we received four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a building permit from the, um, Indian Hill, which really boosted up that one particular year, and that's an outlier. So, that's why I get very, very nervous, e- especially after what Jonathan just said, with building permits coming in, lower numbers than we had received in previous years. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so you're saying in the past, you've gone off of kind of your estimated receipts, not?
Correct. Not the actuals. Any other questions on that? Okay, so, um, I'm going backwards instead of forwards like I was. So, there are a couple of issues that, that I really want to talk about. There were three actual issues that allowed us to come in under the levy limit FY twenty, maintain services that are not going to be repeated in FY twenty one that we all need to be aware of. The first issue is there was no snow and ice deficit last year. So, every year, when you know when I put the budget together, we carry about a two hundred thousand dollar deficit, and when we, um, put the final budget together, we usually take it out of the excess levy capacity because we have to raise it on the recap sheet. Last year, there wasn't any deficit, so that's why, that was one of the reasons we had two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The second issue is, um, in FY twenty, we concluded the negotiated health, uh, insurance cost share shift to the town that was seventy-thirty. That was, FY twenty was the last year we were able to adjust the, the health insurance budget for that. And then, of course, the biggest thing is we received a twenty percent, a, a, a two hundred thousand dollar reduction in pension costs last year because we paid off our early retirement. Because of those two factors, we were essentially able to level fund employee benefits last year, which was a huge savings in, 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 in the budget. It allowed us to fund, yes, Bud?
Mark, on the first one, is it two hundred or one hundred?
Two hundred.
We are anticipating a deficit of two hundred, I thought we took a hundred, no?
I'll get to that.
Okay.
I'll get to that.
All right.
I'll get to that later.
We did say that, but.
Yeah, you'll see, I'll get to that, bud.
No, no, I'm, I'm in the future budget versus the current budget.
We are anticipating a two hundred thousand dollar deficit in the balance, in the level service and budget.
Right, yeah.
I'll get to that. Um, so, we were able to level fund employee benefits, which was a big deal. This year, we're anticipating an increase of two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, so total reversal of what happened, um, last year. And then, the other thing is to assist the town, at Dunstable, the Groton Dunstable Regional School District used four hundred thousand dollars in their excess and deficiency funds to offset their operating budget, which gave us a three hundred thousand dollar reduction in our assessment from them last year. Those funds may not be available this year, and in the preliminary numbers that we received from the school district, which I'll get to in a minute, they are making up for that use last year. We have to make it up in FY twenty one. So, those three issues really added to the half a million dollar deficit that we're facing, uh, for next year. Any questions on that? So, of course, both the Groton Dunstable Regional School Committee and the Shobat Tech are in the process of putting their budgets together, they have not completed them. Because of the strong collaboration between the town and Groton Dunstable, it, it continues, and we talk all the time, and it's really evidenced by their work with us in the working group over the summer, and the continued conversations that I have had with the school superintendent, the school business manager. We continue to have strong collaboration, which I really appreciate that. But based on all of the work that we've done, and based on the three-year budgets and the, the use of E and D that may not be available and everything else, the district right now, and that's just an estimate, so please understand that, they're estimating an increase of one point six million dollars or seven point seven-eight percent in their budget request to level fund services. And that, that may, that may not be enough, because there were some special ed things that are coming up, we don't know what the final state aid numbers are gonna be, we don't know what the, um, cost share is as far as the minimum requirement from the, from the school district, what that budget's gonna be, there could be a shift to Groton, away from Dunstable, depending on the number of students and things like that. There are a lot of unknowns, but the best guess right now from the, or the best estimate, I shouldn't say guess, I apologize, the best estimate right now is one point six million dollars, that they will need next year just to maintain what they're offering right now. And again, we've talked about this in the past, state aid has been level funded essentially, and it's becoming a smaller and smaller percentage of their revenues. I think it's dropped down now, is it about a lady here? Is it down to twenty percent state aid as a portion of your budget?
Yeah.
So, as that number shrinks, Groton and Dunstable have to pay a higher percentage to maintain what they have. So, that's where that number came from.
So, are you suggesting of the one-six, that number at the bottom there?
Yep.
That, um, that that number was three hundred thousand dollars less because of their use of E and D? And that that number is effectively three hundred thousand dollar higher this year to make up for that?
They have to make up for that three hu, that four hundred thousand dollars in E and D, they have to make up for that.
But if, if they hadn't done that last year and, and that three hundred thousand.
Probably still be, it would be a one point, maybe a one point three million dollar increase, but our base would have been higher last year.
Right.
So, it's, 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 the number, that one point six, puts them where they would be this year if they didn't use E and D last year. So, instead of a, instead of a one point two million dollar increase last year, it would have been a one point three million dollar increase or whatever. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, with regard to the Shobat Tech, some good news and some, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, the number of students dropped by six, from forty-four to thirty-eight. That took away the trend that we were seeing in previous years, we would add twelve to thirteen students, uh, to the, uh, to the district each year, which caused our assessment last year to go up over a hundred thousand dollars, which was a big hit last year. So, now, I'm thinking, okay, they dropped six students, I'm gonna decrease the assessment, but I was very wise, I called the school superintendent, I said, hey, I'm gonna drop your assessment. And she cautioned me not to do that because the overall number of students has decreased, which means there's gonna be a reallocation of the cost, plus their capital and their roof repair that they did last year is hitting the budget as well, which town, our town meeting. Was it last year you did that, or the year before?
The roof, I think that was last year.
Was that last year? So, she said, you probably won't see an increase, but you may not see a decrease. So, what I did is I level funded it. I'm hoping at the end of the month, when we go to the town officials' breakfast, we get some good news. We get some good news from them, and the new assessment goes down, that helps our, that helps our budget situation. The most important caveat that I need to say right now, that I say every year, is that the proposed budgets for Groton Dunstable and the Shobat Tech are placeholders right now. They have not finalized it, we won't get the Nishoba budget until the end of the month, and the school district does theirs by the first week of March, correct? By the first week of March, so, they're placeholders, yes, Becky?
And the Shoba breakfast is, I mean, February, it's February eighth or something like that.
Well, it's the first week of February, I thought it was the last week of January.
No, it's January third. It's Friday.
It's the eighth of February.
I thought it was the eighth.
That's just the eighth, I think.
Yes. So, what I always like to do as well is, uh, talk about how we calculated the levy limit. So, of course, we take last year's lev, levy limit of thirty-one point nine million, we add seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to that, and then we add new growth, which we talked about, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, we think our levy limit next year is gonna be thirty-two million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. To that, you have to add debt, uh, excluded debt. So, the, you take the levy limit, and then you add the excluded debt for the town, which is one point five million dollars, which is a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase over last year. And that's because we're doing the first full year, excuse me, the first full year of the, uh, DPW garage and the first full year of the library roof. We wanna offset that. In Mass General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, um, allows us to take bond proceeds that are left over from previous capital projects, as long as they're under fifty thousand dollars, and by vote of the Select Board, we can use that to pay down debt. We're recommending to the Select Board that you use that twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars that's sitting out there in excess bond proceeds to offset excluded debt next year. We think that's a good use of those funds to help the taxpayers. In addition to that, the, the debt exclusion for the Groton Dunstable Regional School District has dropped, uh, this year, because as they pay their, uh, interest, um, as they pay their interest down on the, uh, on the high school, uh, construction project, that's hel, that's helping us, uh, offset some of that cost. So, the total excluded debt, um, is gonna be two million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and twelve thousand. which is an increase of a hundred and, uh, twelve thousand dollars year over year. Right? Did I say that number right? Let me double check and make sure I give you the right number. Yes. Um, so the total levy limit to balance next year's budget is thirty-five million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Added to that is what we call our other available funds, which include state aid, which I told you we were level funding at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. A big portion of our estimated receipts is motor vehicle excise. Gary, that is the five-year average, the one point six five million dollars. Last year, we saw a little bit of a decrease in the first assessment that came out, which is the big one, which means people are slowing down buying new cars. We will get that first assessment in the next, uh, couple of weeks, and hopefully it'll be good news that we'll see an increase. We will adjust that number accordingly. Then the other general revenues, the two point, uh, seven million dollars is part of that three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar increase that we talked about. Free cash of three hundred thousand dollars, which is being used to fund one-time costs in the budget, which is our OPEB liability of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Department head increases of twenty-eight thousand, and, um, debt of ninety-five thousand dollars, which is our pay down on the radio project that we've talked about. Bond as far as you can, pay it down, and then hopefully it'll go away. Uh, and that other available funds, three hundred thousand dollars, which is the EMS fund that we use to offset the, uh, fire department budget, for a total of six million, uh, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And if you look at this next chart, we're estimating a one point six million dollar increase in estimated receipts of four and a half percent, which is the largest increase, I think, I brought forward dollar-wise in, in the last eleven years. So we're really aggressive, um, in our numbers this year in trying to balance this budget as, as best we can. I always like to show you this chart that I put in the budget each year, and that is how our sources of revenue come from. Property taxes, seventy-eight point three percent, which is pretty close to what we were last year. State aid continues to be about two point, uh, three percent. Uh, estimated local receipts increased from eight point five percent of the budget to nine point two percent of the budget because of that, because of that increase. So you see a major, uh, portion of our, of our revenues. So, going into budget number one, which is the, yes, Becky?
The state aid number, you're actually putting in the very same dollar figure-
That we had this year.
And we don't expect them to give us any more than that?
They may. Sometimes it's level funded, sometimes they give us more, but what I've, what I have found is when our estimated receipt number for local aid goes up, our state and county charges sometimes goes up too, and it offsets the, uh, the increase. Well, the last year, they held us harmless, and we got another thirty-eight thousand dollars from what we budgeted at the beginning of the year. But, yeah, I'm level funding it for now, Becky. I'm hoping it'll be higher. The governor will release his budget at the end of the month, um, and sometimes his state aid numbers are what the House and the Senate do, sometimes they're not. So, yes, David?
I have two questions on it. Now, first for the assessor, Jonathan, I just want to confirm. Did you say your estimation of the value of the reassessment was based on actual total new growth last year, subtracting out your estimate of what new growth would have been without the reassessment?
Yeah. Always forget. So, we, we project what, so you're talking about growth, right?
Right.
Okay. So when we, we project what we think the growth will be a year in advance, we're looking at, um, the main driver of new homes. So we're looking at what developments are, you know, and we had a couple of developments. Now, in between that process, we, we did a, what's called a, so we re- we assess every year, interim years, certain years, we reassess valuations every single year, so, um, but we did, we were under an unfunded, very close to an unfunded mandate with the state of doing a complete measuring list. So, a couple of years back, we had some free cash, and the, uh, select board quinched up and said, this is, we should do this now while we have it. So, we were in that process. It's hard to figure how much you're going to get in growth. I estimated it to be about four million. Well, I was off by about three million, because you don't know what you don't know. You don't know what you're going to capture out there. So that was the driver to get it to twenty-eight point, whatever, million it was. And so going forward, we're done with that. We're going to keep doing our cyclical inspections. But you, since we just did, uh, the full measuring list, we're not, you know, and, and, and hopefully we caught everything. We're not expecting to have much new growth going forward with the cyclical inspections.
So twenty-eight million was actual cyclical. You're estimating it eight million roughly because you assumed other new growth would be around twenty? Is that correct?
We estimated, when I put the budget together last year, we felt that new growth was going to come in about twenty to twenty-one million dollars.
One million, yeah.
And it did. We, we nailed it. There was another eight million dollars worth of growth because of the, the full measuring list of the town, which found a lot of additions, basements, things like that, that nobody pulled a building permit for, which we picked up. That added the other eight million. This year, because of the downturn in the building permits for new construction, we're lowering that twenty million that we used last year down to fifteen million. I hope I'm wrong. I hope it's twenty-nine, but I don't think it will be.
Okay. And when we contract with Vision, who does the measuring list, it's, we contract over a couple of years that it's going to take them to do this. We don't know exactly when they're going to put everything in. Well, they did, they did the whole town first, then, uh, took all of the information and input it during the summer. So sometimes they do it in stages, and you'll get growth over a couple of years, but they did it all over the summer, so all that growth came in at once.
Thank you. And the second question, Grant, I assume you're not carrying the dispatch?
We'll get to that.
Oh, all right.
We will get to that.
All right. Thank you.
I also assume the amount of new growth that was added due to the cyclical inspection, that we can anticipate that there are going to be more abatement applications.
Yeah, that's a very good question. The third quarter tax bills, you just got in the mail last week. Uh, his phone has been ringing off the hook. This will be the time people have until February first to file their abatement applications. There may be, Gary. There may be. Don't know. How busy was your phone today?
Fairly busy this morning. So, and, and, you know, before I started as an assistant assessor and then an assessor, I didn't know a lot of, you know, when you see the, the jumps in your value, I didn't know what it was caused by. So we were getting a lot of questions. Now, whether or not that translates to abatements, it, I won't know for a couple of weeks. But we certainly have been busy. But no, I don't feel like it was any busier than last year, phone call-wise. But this is, the first week is usually when you get the funk in phone calls, first two weeks.
So the expense of abatements, as I recall, there's a separate fund, right?
That's true.
Because we were able to take some of that money back.
Yep.
But if an abatement occurs, does, that must materially decrease the assessed value in the town?
Well, what, what we did because of that, the board members and Bud, you may recall, when we put together the budget, uh, for FY twenty, when we filed for the, the recap sheet to set the tax rate, we bumped up the overlay from the hundred and fifty that we estimated last spring to two hundred thousand in anticipation of what you're asking. So, we're prepared for it this year. If it happens, who knows? If it doesn't happen, that goes into overlay surplus, and then that money can be spent on other things moving down the road. David, did I answer your questions?
I'll say.
Excellent. Um, so, the budget, one, and again, this is the level services budget summary. There are no new service offerings in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Everything is, is the same. Um, all current services are maintained as directed by the guidance. We have seven collective bargaining units. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-one will be the final year of three-year, uh, agreements with all seven unions, so we're going to have a busy fall negotiating contracts next year. Six of the union agreements call for cost of living adjustments of two percent, one calls for one point seven five percent. The cost of living adjustments in those contracts add a hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty-two dollars to the, to the level services budget in FY twenty-one. The performance incentive program remains in effect for many of our union employees. With regards to the supervisor union, we are, um, taking the twenty-eight thousand, four twenty-two out of free cash, as I mentioned earlier, uh, to offset that, which means when we calculate their FY twenty-two cost of living will be on the lower number, not on the performance incentive. The total incentive program for all unions was seventy-one thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, so total salary increases were about two hundred and five thousand dollars in the level services, uh, budget. As I mentioned earlier, there'll be an increase, um, in excluded debt of, uh, twenty-three point six-two percent. When we offset the twenty-four thousand and the reduction from the, uh, Groton-Dunstable, uh, school district debt, it goes up a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, as I mentioned, as I mentioned earlier. Um, and again, the Board of Selectmen, or the select board, rather, will be familiar with this proposal to permanently finance the Engine Three purchase over twenty years within this budget, and that will allow us to maintain debt service within the levy at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which to me is, is a number that I'm comfortable with, and I would like to see that, uh, going on. Um, in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, we generated a surplus of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars in country club revenues, which was the first year we've ever done that. Thank you, Gary. We're very happy with that. Uh, right now, we expect a similar surplus in FY twenty, based on what happened over the summer. It matched dollar for dollar what we took in the previous year, and we're, we're maintaining expenses. And so we think in twenty-one, we will break even with the budget when you add the roof repair that's in the capital budget, the fifty thousand dollar roof repair. That surplus will be not by that particular project that needs to be done. So we're, we're very comfortable that the country club will come in, um, on, on budget. And then in compliance with the financial policies, uh, with regards to other post-employment benefits, OPEB as we call it, uh, we want to keep the amount necessary each year added to the trust to prevent the net present value from increasing. Last year, we put a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. This year, we're adding a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which is the number that we need, including adding those two full-time firefighters that we added in the fall, because we said we would add four thousand dollars per new employee. Does that make sense? There's a new section in the budget, uh, this year called Major Initiatives. A major initiative is defined as any proposal increase, any proposal increase in the operating budget of fifty thousand dollars or greater in any fiscal year, or a hundred thousand dollars over three years. There were two requests that came in, in fiscal year twenty-one's budget that met that, um, that we asked for major initiatives. One, two additional dispatches for the, uh, police department. When you take in all costs, salaries and benefits, it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in, in FY twenty-one. And then the second one is something that I added in anticipation of what's going on with the manganese treatment for our water plant to help offset the costs. I was recommending, instead of taking on added debt for that project, which is estimated right now to be in the neighborhood of seven and a half million dollars, that we reinstitute the hydrant fee, which was in the budget up until fiscal year two thousand eight at seventy-five thousand dollars.
But the, the expense isn't the hydrant fee, it's the-
It's the help, it's, instead of putting it for debt, the fifty-fifty thing that, that happened with the sewer, I'm saying to help the water department, we reinstitute that hydrant rental fee that they can put into their budget. Does that make sense?
Well, as a, as a list of major initiatives that we may have to have spending, it would be better to actually have the spending instead of the mitigation.
Okay, good point. Good point. But that was just the way I had it as, as, as an offset of the budget, but I understand your point. While both are worthy of funding, in my opinion, because, yes, John, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'll answer you.
While both are worthy of funding, obviously, under the level services budget, we could not fund either one of those. But I wanted to make the board aware of, and the finance committee aware of those potentials down the road, which was the whole point of the major initiative, to prepare you for things that may come in, in the future. John?
Um, I see this as, um, a placeholder at this point, and not, and not anything more than that.
Correct.
Um, the decision to take expenses out of an enterprise fund and apply them to all taxpayers is one that needs to be made in a totally visible, open way.
Absolutely.
Um, so, this should not be interpreted as something that's already been decided that we're going to do.
No, 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 no.
Something we might have to do.
Correct.
And, and nobody at this point could tell me or anybody else what percentage that hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars is of the total, the total of what it's going to cost. So, stay loose.
I, I, everything you said, I'm with you one hundred percent, and I put it in there just for that very purpose, so that you're aware of it, and you can start having, uh, the debate. So, to summarize, uh, the budget, under the level services budget, all mandatory increases and expenses were covered, obviously wages, pension and health insurance. There were no reductions in personnel, and expenses were thoroughly examined in an effort to find ways to consolidate costs. The total increase in the municipal budget to provide level services, salaries, pensions, wages and everything, was four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, or three point oh five percent. Last year, at this time, I brought in a one point four percent increase. The main reason for that is the two hundred thousand dollar reduction that we see in, in, um, that we saw in the pension, and the fact that we were able to level fund health insurance because of the seventy-thirty split. That is not there, so we were two hundred thousand dollars lower last year for that very, very reason. So that's why we're coming in at three point oh five percent. When you take into the consideration this increase and the increase in the Groton-Dunstable Regional School Assessment, the level services budget exclusive of debt service, and excluded debt, uh, increases by two million, seventy thousand, uh, six hundred and forty dollars, or five point four nine percent. If you remember from the previous slide, we estimated one point six million dollars in revenues. We're coming in at two point one million dollar in expenses. So when you take that into consideration, and the snow and ice deficit of two hundred thousand dollars, we are estimating a deficit in the budget, level services budget of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is pretty much on target with the work that the working group did over the summer. Yes, Allison?
Marlena, actually, I'd already, uh, David, can you pass the microphone?
I just wanted to comment on the level service budget, because we're, we're starting to get into our deep discussions the month of, um, January and February. Um, I know that on the agenda, we're discussing changes in special education. Um, level service budget, when we're talking about educating students, because our enrollment is changing, and, uh, specific changes with our special education students. So, when the services change, the qualified personnel must change to provide those mandatory services. So, although our, I see a level service budget for municipal, it's a little bit, it's kind of a little different because it may not equivalate to a change in FTE. We may be changing our personnel to exchange out for the ones that we do need. Um, superintendent does understand the necessity, um, to try and work through this year. I believe most of the school committee, if not all, from our last couple of discussions, uh, feel that that is, um, a, a great interest for both Dunstable and Groton reps. Uh, without seeing the school budget, it's very difficult for us to comment more than that. There definitely is some special education needs in the future. I think the best way to address it is probably going to have to be an executive session, because I think it is very important for our chairboards to understand the complexity of what's driving special education. But because our district is so small, um, there is, uh, liability in regards to maintaining students' confidentiality. So when you're talking about a, 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 a small school and a certain percentage of kids, it's too easy to actually isolate who those individuals are. But executive session will allow us to actually discuss that. So I'll be in touch with the chairs. So I just, I think it's really important for you to understand, our numbers of students with special education may decrease or increase, but the severity of the needs are changing.
I, I, I think that's a great explanation, and I think it's important that we, that we keep that in mind as we go through the budget. But when I consider level service, in my definition, it's based on keeping everything the way it was last year in terms of where we are. Obviously, they're still in the process of putting their budget together, as I said, as I said earlier. Thank you, Marlena. Um, enterprise fund budgets, uh, water department's going up fifteen point, uh, one seven percent. That is mainly because they are planning for any manganese issues that they need to deal with. They have raised rates to justify, uh, this increase. Sewer department is going up five point two percent. They are looking at their rates as well. They have some treatment, uh, issues that they're dealing with, upgrades to the pebble treatment plan at which we send the center sewer district, so they're planning for that. The Four Corners Sewer District, that looks like a huge increase, but when you go from twenty-three thousand to thirty-two thousand, it makes it look like a major, um, uh, increase in the budget, but we are getting in the revenues. The Board of Health, just for informational purposes, the Board of Health, who enforces the mandatory hookup section of the bylaw, has sent out mandatory hookup notices to the remaining properties in the district. Some have already connected. Others are in the process. They have until, I think, June thirtieth to connect. So that'll generate more revenue within that, so I feel very comfortable about the Four Corners Sewer District. And our cable department is essentially level funded, uh, going into next year. Yes, Becky?
So back to that fifty-nine percent, Four Corners. Is the fifty-nine percent based on an assumption that there's more people that will be tying in because they got mandatory notice?
Yeah, it's based on who's hooked up, the, the anticipation of who's hooked up and what we have to pay the town there. and what we have to pay the town there.
Okay. I mean, it still seems, I, I'm not clear what happened that made it jump up that much. But it's the new people that have not tied in yet?
Correct, that have tied in, yes.
There's only two tie-ins, three tie-ins right now.
Correct.
Cravens, the coroner with the bank, and Duncan, and Shaws.
Well, Shaws is, Shaws is due to tie in, they haven't tied in yet, they need to tie in. The Mexican restaurant needs to tie in. But this also includes new houses that were built up on the Moulton, the residential development. A lot of those have connected as well, which adds to that.
So I'm still not clear, is the fifty-nine percent increase people who have already tied in?
And anticipated to tie in, correct.
And the ones that we expect will respond to the notice that says you have to tie in.
Correct, and money that we have to pay to air when they tie in on connection charges.
Right.
Does that make sense? So enterprise funds go up ten-point-six. So that's Budget One. Any questions on Budget One?
I'm glad you asked. Do you anticipate retained earnings to start building up revenue?
Yes, good question. Okay, so Budget Two. According to the budget guidance, the second budget would require the town manager to reduce both the municipal budget and the proposed operating assessment of the Groton Dunstable Regional School District by equal amounts, the anticipated assessment. Keep in mind, it's a placeholder. So to meet the guidance, we've done the following things. We've reduced the projected snow and ice deficit by a hundred thousand dollars. I'm hoping that that, that that works. So that reduces the cut on both the, we did that equally, if we took it a hundred thousand, that's fifty thousand to the school, fifty thousand to the town. So that means that we would have to do a two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollar reduction in both budgets to make that happen. To do that, we're recommending that the following reductions in the municipal level services budget. Select Board Minor Capital, we're recommending that we eliminate the twenty-five thousand, six-eighty-three for the town share, the Pepper Sewer Grant upgrade. That would be borne by the ratepayers, so the Sewer Department would need to increase their budget if we make this reduction. The Board of Assessors, we're recommending to eliminate the twenty-one thousand, six-hundred for annual cyclical inspections that we added at the Fall Town Meeting. And what I'm going to recommend that we do that is we pay for it out of overlay surplus, because it's, it's related to the assessments, and I think we can pay for it that way. It is an annual cost, it should be in the operating budget, but I think we generate enough overlay surplus each year to justify doing that, that way. We still have to review that, the assessors have to agree to it, but that's the proposal here. This next one, David, this was a question you asked earlier. This next one, I am adamantly opposed to. I think it's gonna hurt us, and I think it goes against our sound financial principles of never using one-time revenues to fund operating expenses. However, given the pressure of the budget and where we are with regards to a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit and trying to maintain personnel, we would count the hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant income towards the wage line of the communications budget. I don't like it, I'm against it. However, I feel I have no choice but to do that, because to find a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, I come back and have to lay off three employees. I don't want to do that.
You're still not funding the two additional requested dispatchers?
Correct, that's not in the budget. So we will have to make sure that we receive at least a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in salaries through the grant. Last year, it was seventy-two thousand?
Yes, this year is higher, if you're back.
It goes back and forth, so some years it's high, some years it's low. I've directed the Police Chief, when he files his grant application this year in June, to request a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in salaries. If we don't get that, we're gonna have to address it, we have a problem.
That's only, that's only gonna help us one time.
It's, it, it's a one-year, well, yes. Well, we would have to get the hundred-and-fifty, John, every year moving forward.
Yeah. If they were to end the grant program altogether, then we'd be stuck.
We'd have to use the grant every year after.
Correct.
Yes, you're committing into it.
We've used it every year for...
Some has been for wages, some has been for... We take in, we've averaged about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in that grant, because we're a regional dispatch with Dunstable. If we, for some reason, we always hear that Dunstable is looking for other options. And they do, every year. They come to us and say, we're looking at other options. If we lose Dunstable, and we're no longer a regional, that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand will drop to about forty-eight thousand. Please keep that in mind. So I, I, I think I said I'm against it, right? Okay, I don't need to say it again, I'll just, I'll move on, Allison.
And I won't ask any questions, but Marlene, I don't know.
Yes, Marlene.
I, I wanted to echo Mark's remarks in regards to the grant on the Superintendent's side, 'cause I just had this discussion with her in regards to our grants. The same risks are being assumed on the GD side as well. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the room knew that we have approximately six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in grants in our budget that are not captured, they are captured as revenues. So if the state was to take those away, that would create a huge problem. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're all seemingly taking very similar risks there.
I appreciate that. The next reduction would be the water safety expenses, twenty-eight thousand dollars, not to fund the lifeguards at Sajison Beach. We would still, we are still funding the maintenance of Sajison Beach. So we're just not going to have lifeguards, or we'll swim at your own risk under this particular reduction. But we will have the Park Ranger there, and we'll still have the porta-potties, and we'll still pay for the maintenance of, of, of the thing to keep it going. But we will not have lifeguards there. The next reduction is fifteen thousand dollars in expenses from weed management for the maintenance of Batacuk Pond. I think I explained this in my budget message, but just to make everybody aware of it, the town spent two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in CPA funds over the last three years getting rid of the weeds in Batacuk Pond by using a weed harvester and some other methods of pulling the weeds out of, out of the pond. There is a maintenance program annually that needs to be done in order to maintain that, what work that they've done, totaling about twenty-five thousand dollars. The Water Commission had committed ten thousand towards that. The municipal budget would need to come up with fifteen thousand towards that for the maintenance. I cut it out of the budget, because we just, that's a new service offering. Even though I had it in the level services budget, it was to maintain the investment at two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. But when you have to make reductions, again, that was something that we decided to, to reduce. And then the last reduction that we're recommending in, in the budget is seven, is five thousand dollars, and that's the town's share of the Medicare costs. It's a, it's a guess when we put that budget together. That five thousand may be needed, may not be needed, depends on how much snow and ice overtime we have, how much police overtime, fire overtime, DPW overtime. Because as, as the wages go up, the Medicare portion that we pay, the one-point...
One-point-four-five percent.
The one-point-four-five percent goes up as well. Yes?
So that's a, that reflects kind of budgeting more conservatively, but not actually necessarily changing services or...
Correct, that doesn't really change anything.
Historically, we're able to bring it in less than one-forty, so we take the chances.
And then the final reduction, following the guidance, I'm supposed to reduce the school by two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. Well, based on these reductions that we did in the municipal budget, that leaves two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. So it's fourteen, thirteen thousand dollars less than what the guidance called for. I wanted to call that to your attention, because the, the total municipal reduction is two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, based on those.
Yeah, leave free, we'll pull up that chart, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back.
You know, we're in the budget process, which is just starting, this is like the beginning of it.
Yes.
As you know, I'm, I'm opposed to a couple of those, and I think we should...
Oh, I know you are.
Yeah, we should do switching a little bit somehow, somewhere, so.
I look forward to working with the Finance Committee on this.
I know you're hoping. So these are good starts, and we ought to think about this one of those and what it means other than it does time, which is good to access the number.
And I appreciate that, bud. So should money become available, should funding become available? We are recommending that priority-wise, what gets put back in the budget. Priority one would be the weed management to protect that two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar CPA investment. Putting the lifeguards back at Sajison Beach. Coming back with as much money in the communication budget as possible is Priority Three. Priority Four is the Select Board Minor Capital, which is the payment to sewer debt. Priority Five is Employee Benefits, and then Priority Six is the Board of Assessors expenses, because we think we can cover that out of, out of the overlay surplus. Obviously, as money comes back in, following the guidance, fifty percent goes to the municipal budget, fifty percent goes to the operating assessment of Groton Dunstable. Does that make sense? Because that's the guidance, split that deficit fifty-fifty.
So one of the things that might, one possibility is that, as both Boards discusses, the priority list might change?
Absolutely, this is just my recommendation. You are the, the Finance Committee, it's the Finance Committee's budget that goes to Town Meeting. The Select Board and I do have the right under the Charter to amend that budget on the Fall Town Meeting, but we've never done that, we've always gone in unified. So working with the Finance Committee is what we want to do.
So, so this funding source, I'm sorry, the recommendations is in the context of the budgets that you're looking at here and now?
Correct.
You start, when we start making changes to those...
Yep.
This is in gello, and it may have to change.
Correct. But my job is to give you something to debate, and I did. And I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of debates, and I look forward to them. The capital budget is, is there, this, this is the list of items that we're recommending be funded this year, totaling two-point-five million dollars, and that includes the Groton Dunstable capital budget that, that we have. So some of that money's coming from estimate, coming from ambulance funds, some of it's coming from the capital asset fund. This next list here gives you a breakdown of where it is. I had estimated five-hundred-thousand dollars out of the capital asset fund. We've knocked it down to four-seventy-one, six-seventy. So we're actually using less of our capital asset to fund our capital budget for next year. The...
Sorry, Mark?
Yes?
The capital asset fund, does that have another name?
The Capital Stabilization Fund.
All right, thank you.
So looking at the balanced budget, the balanced budget, we're recommending to level fund general government. We're looking at a small decrease in the land use budget. We're looking for a major decrease, one percent decrease in the protection of personal property. That's because of the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we're pulling out of the grant. Department of Public Works, modest increase of point-seven-seven percent. Library and Citizen Services, an increase of one-point-eight-three percent. And then Employee Benefits, of course, which is the big increase of five-point-one percent. The total municipal budget, under the level service, under the balanced budget, shows the municipal government budget going up one-point-four percent. This next chart shows you where it goes by, you know, regional school districts, fifty-seven percent. Municipal budget, broken down that way, forty-three percent. And again, the regional schools includes the show of the tech. And we always like to show you what the anticipated tax impact is. We're looking at a three-point-four-three percent in the average tax bill. We're looking at a four-point-six-seven percent in the average tax bill related to excluded debt. And the total tax bill would go up three-point-five-one percent, or three-hundred dollars under this proposed balanced budget. And that's based on the average home value being four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, based on the fiscal year twenty assessments. Obviously, that will change when the assessors finalize FY twenty-one. But I will tell you, last year at this time, we were within thirteen dollars of what the actual tax bill was, the average tax bill was. So we, we're pretty, we're pretty, we're pretty good at estimating it, and this is a pretty good idea. It would be about a three-hundred-dollar increase in the average tax bill, primarily because of the increase in the excluded debt, which we are offsetting a little bit by the, by the use. I would be remiss if I did not talk about my budget, oh, sorry, if I did not talk about my budget concerns going into next year. The proposed budget does not follow sound financial budgeting principles, in which you don't use one-time revenue sources to fund operating expenses, which I think may impact the town's bond rating, and I, again, want to caution, should the nine-one-one grant not be received, we'd have to find a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to fund dispatcher wages. It's the largest one-year increase in estimated receipts, which again could have a detrimental impact to the town's free cash position in FY twenty-two, which again could affect our bond rating and the capital budget. And the five-year projection continues to show the need for operational overrides over five-hundred thousand dollars over the next several years. So even when you balance it now, we are looking at operational overrides, and you have a bigger one in your budget that you can see. It doesn't show up that well on the screen, I apologize. But it does show anticipated overrides based on reasonable assumptions moving forward, that being a three-point-four percent increase on average in the municipal budget, and about a six percent increase in the Groton Dunstable assessment each year, which is just a guess. It's the best I can do at this, at, at this time. So...
I'd add two things in.
What's that?
I'd add two things to that.
Tell me.
One is that in twenty, well, let's go back to free cash. The one-fifty is gonna hurt us either way, because we're using. So when you think about free cash, it's not gonna be there. Has that always gone on free cash? So first of all, we've been generating around, as you and I talked about, this one-point-one million dollars of free cash a year, and we fund some big stuff with that. This budget, and I, I support this budget doing this, because this is one of those years. We're gonna end up next year, not this year, current twenty-twenty will be okay, assuming we get the one-one, because there's nothing different in the twenty-twenty budget.
We follow the same principles we follow previously.
When we get to the beginning, the, this fall of twenty-twenty, when we're now looking at, we're into the twenty-one budget, the cash flow problem's gonna be in twenty-two. Because twenty-one, we're using one-fifty, which would have been in that one-one. And we're using some revenue, I don't know what the number is, say it's a hundred. So now we're at two-fifty. So the one-one is gonna be down by two-fifty. So it's not gonna hurt us in twenty-one, it will hurt us in twenty-two. As far as having cash available for capital, we're probably gonna be short by a hundred or two-hundred thousand if the world continues to truck along. So all the things we're talking about don't really, I don't believe, impact us to, whether we can make the budget, we can't, because we have lots of lines where we have free cash in twenty-one, because we're using two-hundred of it. So the twenty-one budget to make the budget, to me, is not the issue. The issue is how much free cash we're gonna use, because we're getting more, we're getting less conservative. And that's gonna impact the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two capital.
Correct.
So that's one thing, people ought to understand, that the, making the budget is not as high a risk as how much cash we're gonna use because we're more conservative.
Correct.
I should say, less conservative.
Less conservative.
So, and that's why we want to think about some of the things we want to do here in those, the five or six reductions you want to make, because there are things we probably could do this, we can talk about that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is when the, the, the big hole we have, five-hundred, five-hundred, the deficit going forward. We have, and the reason we talked about doing this at the Spring Town Meeting was that we have an opportunity, and it's gonna be a, a short one, where we have major contracts coming up for the school district and the municipal, wage and salary.
Yeah, schools are in the negotiation now that would affect twenty-one's budget, right?
So twenty-one, so we're, right now, we have a problem. We're, we're, we have an imbalance between spending and revenue, which we know. And the two biggest drivers are wages and benefits. We're at seventy-five to eighty percent of municipal, same exact number for the schools.
Correct.
So when you think about that giant number, this is the one chance we get to try to negotiate those numbers to a level that allows us not to have that five-hundred-thousand dollars or a smaller number. So the only reason this makes sense to me is because we have those two big opportunities. And if we don't get any money out of those, and we just continue at the same rate, then we will have a hole in twenty-two we're gonna have to deal with big time. So twenty-one, I believe with this budget, is, is a good budget. It's less conservative, but that's okay. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we will have opportunities, real spending opportunities, which is the wages, salaries, your, your negotiations, Marlene's negotiations. Those are the ones where seventy-five percent of spending, we can influence the run rate going forward. So twenty-one, I'm okay with it. I agree with you, I was a CFO like you, conservative, conservative, conservative. But sometimes you gotta say, let's not be quite as conservative, because twenty-two is coming, and we're gonna have...
I follow the guidance, I follow the guidance.
You did.
And I, and I wanted to do that. And the, the main thing I want everybody to keep in mind is I want to make sure we maintain what we have in terms of reserves and everything else for next spring, when we potentially be going out with a major bond issue on the Florence Roach Elementary School. I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes our AAA bond rating when that comes to fruition, because that will affect interest rates. And when you're talking about a forty to eighty million dollar bond issue, right? A small uptick in the interest rate is devastating. So I just want to make sure that everybody keeps that in mind. We need to make sure we maintain what we have for next spring when we deal with the Florence Roach Elementary School.
Next spring being?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, which we will have this...
Which we should be okay.
Because it's gonna be at the twenty-two number.
Yep, we should be okay. So I had a lot of fun putting this budget together, it was, it was difficult. I want to thank John... I wanna thank John and Bud and Mike and Shark for their, for their help with the finance team, of course. I wouldn't be anywhere without Patricia, Jonathan, Melissa, Dawn, and, and Mike Hartnett. It was, it was, it was a good effort. I hope you appreciate the effort and you appreciate the information. I look forward to working with the Finance Committee and the Select Board as we, as we go through the process. And I'd be happy to answer any last questions that you have before we wrap up. So thorough. There were no questions. I love it.
Exactly. It's a good start to things.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So, do you wanna take a quick break while the FinCon?
Yeah.
Exits?
Yeah.
Item in the Town Manager's report is the, whether or not you want to have separate goals for the, for the Town Manager for the next six months or continue the way we have for the last twelve months, which your goals were my goals. We all work together to accomplish those goals. So, your call.
Alrighty. Becky?
I would suggest that it's a good idea to have some goals. And I have some to suggest. And I wanna preface this by saying that I think things have been going very well. And so, these are not goals that are anything new. But the training that we had on how to do evaluations included having SMART goals, which were specific. And it occurred to me that its main goal of working to facilitate the board's smooth functioning. There were a couple of aspects of it that I particularly thought I would like to see. So, I'll just send those down and I can read them. I did talk with Mark about these.
Could I ask one clarification?
Sure.
Are you, are these that you're gonna talk about for the period from now till the end of June?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You guys have it as you do?
I have it.
Yeah, it's, you can...
We'll go.
But again, I, so I think these are things that generally happen. They certainly, things have been going well recently. I don't wanna see any deterioration from that. So, the first one is the Town Manager will continue his practice of keeping the Select Board fully informed about any and all situations, events, or issues that he learns about, which may reasonably come under the Select Board's purview. The second one is Town Manager will continue his practice of following all Select Board policies. And if he believes the deviation from Select Board policy is warranted, he will bring a request for such change in advance to the entire Board for discussion at a regularly posted meeting. The third one is all communication from the Town Manager, either verbal, email, or text with members of the Select Board and members of the public will be courteous and respectful. Number four, the Town Manager will use the method of seeking input from the Select Board via reply-to-me-only email only in cases of emergency, when a decision must be made sooner than at a posted meeting. In these instances, the Town Manager will inform the Board of the outcome of the matter once the decision is made. And number five, in collaboration with the Select Board Chair, the Town Manager will prepare a continuous rolling calendar of agenda items for the ensuing three-month period.
Okay. So, I guess the first thing to point out is that just like the Select Board goals where, you know, the last twelve months are continuing, I mean, these, these all still, those all still equally apply kind of to the Town Manager. So, you know, to me, number five, for example, is already on the goals list.
That's true. We seem to keep failing at making it happen. That's why I was mentioning it. I mean, the last time that I...
I guess that, as, as the person who's at least partially responsible for that, that's the first time I'm hearing that. So, if you wanna let us know what it is you'd like to be seeing?
Yeah. So, the last time that...
That's been on our agenda several times.
The last time that a three-month predicted calendar was prepared was in September. And I never saw anything after that that listed upcoming meetings and what would be on the agenda. Maybe, maybe I...
Okay. So, I guess it's the rolling piece then. I mean, to me, December just ended.
Right.
So...
But I mean, I would like to see, at this point, I'd like to see three months. And in February, I'd also like to see three, three months forward.
So, it's kind of the rolling piece that's been...
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't know where other folks are at. You know, to me, the first question is, is kind of at a higher level, do we want to talk about adding separate goals for the Town Manager? Or do we, you know, kind of agree that the shared goals that have been put forth cover things?
I think we kind of fell into that decision inadvertently last year. We, there was a proposal last year of separate goals. We discussed them at two meetings. And I think the general consensus was that they weren't very robust. The minutes say that they were discussed and there wasn't any decision reported in the minutes and that they, you had said we should hold off another week and regroup. And it never came back to us for any decision. So, the fact that, it's, I think it's obvious, the Town Manager, of course, should be selected, should be supporting our goals. So, we're all working together. I can agree with that. But I think this is, in my opinion, this is just being a little bit more specific about what that goal about help the Select Board's functioning and communication. This is what I mean when I'm on that goal.
Okay. Anyone else have input on this at a high level or details? Excuse me.
I, I...
Go ahead, John.
I'm just, I don't, number three, is it, is that a goal? Or is that, I, I don't see it, I don't see that as a goal. I see it as, I mean, if that's, I see it as, if it doesn't do that, that's a problem. But I don't see it as a goal. I see it as when we have guidance, but...
That's the standard that...
Yeah, that we, that we have. And I think some of our calls have even addressed that. So, I don't see it as a goal. I don't see, actually, I don't see any goals. I, I see suggestions as to... But I don't see it as goals. I mean, I think the goals are kind of have a bigger impact, a bigger hit for, for all, for all of us. And that's why I think the goals should, our goals, we should all be working together on, on the same goals. That's the way I'm looking at it.
I guess this is, in my opinion, this is how, how we have smooth functioning with the board.
That, that could, that might be true too.
Which we do have right now.
And it might be true, but I, and I, and I kind of agree with that. I just don't, I don't see them as goals. I, I, and I'm not saying any of these are bad ideas. They're actually good ideas. And it's the way, and I think, what I'm reading here, I think I've experienced. I see it. So, I, I hear you. And I, I just don't think they're goals. I think it's just like...
John?
I'm, as you, as, as some of you are probably aware, I'm kind of hung up on something called SMART goals.
Right.
So, when I look at these, I try to figure out, could I, could I turn this into a SMART goal? And number three grabbed me right away because only if you can define what is courteous and respectful, I can't turn that into a SMART goal because it's judgmental. There's no, how do I measure it? One person's idea of disrespectful is somebody else's, oh, it's no big deal. So, that's, that's a very hard one to, to get your arms around. It's, it's how we wanna behave. But when you have to get down to put words in there that you can say, okay, that was violated, it cuts pretty hard. So, I do believe, in the long run, the man, the Town Manager should have some goals of, of his own, in addition to working with, with the Select Board. But I think we need to spend a significant amount of time thinking about what those are because we would really be getting something started that hasn't been going on here for a while. And how we're gonna do it and how many there're gonna be. And in my mind, they have, we have to turn them into SMART goals.
So, the SMART goal piece was part of that training. So, the specific, which is the S of SMART, is part of why I wanted to put some specifics in the goal of facilitating smooth board functioning. Some of these things, more than six months ago, a year ago, I'm not sure were always being met. And so, I didn't want that to recur. But I agree that it's hard to say how you measure. And I know that's what the M in SMART is. Maybe they're just like sub, sub-statements on the goal.
So, for me, kind of weighing in as the, the fourth person here, I, I agree, I think, conceptually with John Geiger that, that I would generally think that there would be goals for the Town Manager, kind of independent of the Select Board. Although one of those goals would always be, you know, helping the Select Board. You know, to me, most of these are, are expectations that we have that are already kind of articulated or held. So, I'm not entirely clear what, what we would be gaining in putting these in, in goal format. And then, you know, again, to the measurable piece, what are we doing in, in our next evaluation when we're saying, well, was goal number four ma, I mean, it, it, these aren't, you know, to me, goals are more accomplished, a thorough review of housing or electrical usage or, you know, they're, they're kind of tangible things. You know, that, that said, there is a piece of me that, as I read through some of these, excuse me, you know, there, it, I do have questions if, if I, as an individual or for any member as an individual, felt like there was an issue with any one of these, not necessarily on a repetitive, ongoing basis, that is a one-off, what do we do with that?
Right. And if we hear from a member of the public with a concern, what do we do with it?
I mean, to me, I guess at, at this point, I'm kind of leaning in the direction of we have, you know, this, this window and our time is probably better spent on other things than, than setting goals. We have plenty of work to do. The Town Manager has plenty of work to do. You know, and I think we can keep this in mind and start the process of setting goals, really, just in a few months. I mean, these would only go through June.
Right.
So, we're talking around, you know, April or May, having this conversation all over again. You know, certainly, the, the calendar piece, I think, is sort of an amendment to the existing goal. And I have no problem, you know, Mark and I can work to, to step it up and, and do that more thoroughly.
I, I haven't seen, like, on this reply-to-me-only, I haven't seen that used extensively.
Every once in a while.
And when it's used, it's primarily to avoid any of us getting caught into some sort of an open meeting trap.
I, well, without going into detail, I think if you think back, there was an instance in July when we did not like this. It was right around the Fourth of July. And there was a more recent instance. And I had talked with Mark. He said, why are we, why, why can't we discuss this at an open meeting? The, the, the problem is, we can't talk with each other. And so, if we're put in a position to making, of making a decision by five individuals sending email to Mark, it deprives all of us of the benefit of any discussion and any aspects of this question that, a hearing aspect of the, of the question that we might individually not have thought of.
Well, if Mark, if Mark is sending out the reply-only-to-me thing, that's one thing. If it's a board member that's sending that out, that's another twist.
If I may address what Becky said, Allison.
Yeah.
I usually use that if it's my decision that I make as the Town Manager and I wanna receive input from, from board members for, to help me make that decision. I like to, to get input. The, the one instance that Becky's talking about in July, I gotta, I gotta go back and look at that. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. But I don't use that because even doing that is a violation of the open meeting law. So, I only do it if it's a decision that I have to make and I'm looking for input from the Board. Back in December, I received an email from a member of the Explorer troop who had an old pumper that he wanted to store in one of our buildings. Technically, that's my decision because under the Charter, I'm responsible for the maintenance and the management of the facilities under the, under the control of the Board of Select. So, I sent that out to you, asking you what, what you thought. Asking you what what you thought, and then it sort of fell off the radar because it never happened, I know, John, you had talked to Matt about it. But that's why I I try to use that. If I did something in July, I'll I'll go back and look and make sure I I didn't do anything nefarious, but I I understand Becky's point. And I I try to use that when it's my call, that a decision that I have to make. In terms of these goals, if I may, Becky and I had an excellent conversation about these on Friday, we spent a a good time talking about them. And and my feeling is, these are things that I do now, that I'm responsible for and I need to do now, and if I don't do them, I'll hear about it from from you. So it's, to me, it's part of my day-to-day management function. But I'm happy to do whatever this board directs me to do. And I appreciate Becky giving me the opportunity to talk to her about them before she presented them to you.
So, John and Allison, you both indicated you thought maybe there should be some separate goals for the town manager.
I I I believe that there is a, there is a place for that. And they would be written in a manner that they're measurable, they're they're truly SMART goals. And. Several of those to start. In conjunction with ending one evaluation period and the beginning of another. Makes sense to me.
Do you have any suggestions what they should be?
I have a number of things bouncing around in my head, but they're probably going to stay bouncing around because they'll change as they bounce off each other and so forth. But I mean, I I can look at, I can give you an example of something I've been toying with. There is a. A document in in the bylaws. And it tells you the name of every street in town, it tells you where all the stop signs are supposed to be, it tells you where all the speed limits are on every road in the town. That don't look like, to me, like it's been touched in ten years. Now, if that involves fire department, it involves Tom Delaney. I could see putting together a a a goal for the town manager to work with his town departments. And I'd probably divide that up, because it isn't like we have people just sitting around waiting to go out and count the stop signs. You could break it up into a couple of years and and work the way through that document and bring it up to date. So, there's one that I've been noodling on that said, yeah, that could, that could work. Because it isn't, you and I trying to go out and count stop signs. First, we wouldn't find them all.
Right.
Two, we'd get tired in a hurry. And three, would we have to then transfer what we find to somebody else, and the more times you transfer the information, guess what happens? The wilder it gets. So, yes, there there's an example that hopefully is is helpful.
I I. I don't have a problem with maybe finding a goal or two for the town manager, I just don't want to get him. Muck muck down in in. Minuscule, you know, tiny little details, number one, we pay him a lot of money to to manage the town, I want him managing the town, I want a goal that's. Appropriate for the level that he's at and what we expect from him. I'm not even sure, sorry, John, I'm not sure if the stop sign thing is at that low either, I don't know. I get, I understand what you're saying.
You know, well, it's us communicating something we want to see happen in the administrative, day-to-day side of the business.
And and that.
And. He oversees that.
Yeah.
And we, I think, have been since since I've been on the board, not that I had anything to do with it. We've been pretty good about staying out of his hair in terms of going off and telling the. Various department heads to go do this, go do that, go do something else.
I could not agree with you more.
And that's my concern, I'm just sat through that financial presentation, and that's where I want him focused, that's what I want him to do, I heard the AAA bond rating, you know. Not that it's in jeopardy, but some of the things that we might be doing could put it in jeopardy, those are the kind of things, if I were to set goals, my goals would be keep our AAA bond rating, keep the, keep the. Keep the street signs where they are, keep the public works, department work, and the fire department, please, those, I mean, and those are all our goals, I get it.
But my notion, John, is that. A goal for Mark is is a goal for the administrative side of town government, it's not specifically for Mark to go out and do all the work.
Yeah, I like that.
In fact, I would be very concerned if he didn't use the police department. You know, I can think about it, there's people driving these roads day and night, you can start writing down where there are stop signs. And and start collecting the data as time, you know, goes by, and orchestrate it and make sure it's getting done. But that doesn't mean he's doing any of the nitty-gritty.
I'm coordinating, if 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 I may, to move this along, I appreciate the goals that the the board wants to talk about. I think right now, we're getting, as John said, we're getting into our busy season with the budget, town meeting and everything else. I think we have some good goals that the board has taken off in the next six months, there are some other things that the board wants me to do relative to Boynton Meadows. I'd like to continue on the way we are right now and work with the board when we start establishing the goals in the spring for next year. That we we talk about the town manager goals at that time as well, more than happy to do that, does that make sense?
Yeah, to me, that doesn't mean these aren't important.
I'm doing that now, and I will continue to do.
You know, I think most of these are a behavior we all should subscribe to.
Exactly.
Right, and I think that that.
And there's nothing, it's goodness, it's not anything wrong, yeah.
I think, so I'm fine with that approach, Mark, I think that, you know, to me, and I don't think this will come as news to Mark. You know, looking at, for example, number three, there have been a handful of times when I've gone to Mark and said, you know, I I kind of have an issue with the tone of this email. We've had a conversation, it's. You know, of the thousand emails back and forth we've had in the last three months, it's maybe three or four of them. But that said, I mean, in in my mind, the concern becomes. If I'm feeling this way as the the chair. Are there other people in the community, in the town hall, on the board, who are getting similar emails and and aren't comfortable? And and what do we do? With that? You know, what do I do with that, so we have conversations, it's not, i- if I felt like it were a frequent occurrence, it would be in a very different situation. But. I don't know what I'd do with that kind of information, if you will.
So, and and I think there's a normal risk in email and text. Because you're not looking at the person in the face, you can't try and read body parts. And you get this message, and part of how you react to it is maybe you just got off of a nasty phone call.
Yep.
Not with Mark, but with whoever sent you the message. So the possibility of. Misinterpretation of what's implied. Or or even said is real, and sometimes the best thing to do before you respond is to make a call for that person and say, did you really mean this? I'm interpreting this and it's feeling uncomfortable, and the kind of thing you'd do if you were right standing with the person. So, I I agree, there's a, we, there's a risk for all of us, both sending and receiving.
I think it's just. It's worth having the discussion because, yes, there can always be outliers, yes, there can always be misunderstanding. And, yes, ideally, the best approach is to go and have that direct conversation. But as Allison just said. We as. Elected officials. First of all. If we hear that something has gone on between somebody else and the town manager. We are, our hands are tied, what can we do? About that, and also, if it's happening, if something does not seem as courteous as it should to us. Then, is, are there other people who are experiencing that, I think it's something to be alert to, I think it bears. Reminding that the standard, we are setting a high standard and we hope it will always be met.
And I and I think, and I commend you for putting this together because it makes us all think about these particular things here.
Right.
And and all. Take closer attention to them.
I I am comfortable with the approach that you just described also, Mark.
Very quickly, through the. The ongoing issues list, I am just about done with the senior center file accounting, I am waiting for one more invoice. And I need the architect to sign off on it, but I will tell you, the budget is going to come in under the 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 funding.
The spending is going to come in under the budget.
The spending is going to come in under the budget. And, we ended up borrowing eighty-eight thousand dollars less than we needed. So it ends up ha- helping the taxpayers, I'll explain that when I give you the final account.
We borrowed eighty-eight thousand more than we needed.
No, we borrowed eighty-eight thousand dollars less than the town meeting authorized.
Ah, but not not less than we needed.
Correct. And we still pay them under the budget. So that's good news for the taxpayers because that's less debt service for them.
That helps.
Yes. Prescott School Sprinkler System Project, I am working with Bob Gosse, I'm clerk of the works, I'm finding a contractor, I've been on that, so I'm excited about that. Water Department Manganese Issue, next Monday, please, we're going to start our meeting at six o'clock to do our regular business. And then at the conclusion of that, hopefully between seven and seven-thirty, we will go into executive session with the Water Commission now that we've received a draft consent order. So we will have much more on that next week, I have no updates on the MS four permit or the policy.
So two questions, one is, is that draft consent order public?
I wrote back to you on that, I don't think it is because it's the subject of an executive session. So let's talk to town council about that next week.
Okay, I didn't know whether you had, I saw your response, I didn't know whether you were.
No, I haven't.
Town council.
Yeah, that's, I was, I was waiting, you in agreement with that?
There's certainly no markings on it to suggest it has confidentiality or.
I know, but I'm just concerned that we're going into executive session to discuss the document, does that make it, and and town council has ruled that we can, so. I want to be careful.
Yeah, no, I think my question was more, have you heard that from town?
No, I have not.
Okay, there we go. And then, and do you have any feel from either Tom Orcott or the Water Commissioners, do they want questions in advance or?
I would suggest we do, they are meeting with town council, the Water Commission themselves are having a first preliminary meeting with town council. Tomorrow night or Wednesday night?
They're having a public hearing.
Yeah, but I think they go into executive session with town council as well. To get ready for the meeting with the select board the following week, so I would say yes.
So questions and comments?
Please.
To you to go to them?
Absolutely, and I'll get it off right away, Allison.
I had a, last Thursday. I went with Tom, with Tom Orcott. And we went through the Batacook Processing Site. And we went through the Whitney Well Sites. And for me, I I learned a lot. And I suggested, if you have the interest in the time, give Tom a call. And you go out and look at what's what's really there and and.
Did you get any answer to the question, I know you had mentioned that you didn't quite understand how they came up with that?
No, we did not talk about.
Money, okay.
Money or or solutions, we talked about how does it work now.
I see.
Right, like, I had thought all along that. The water from the Whitney Wells went up to Chestnut Hill, to the reservoir, it doesn't. It goes out the hose. Turns right and goes down the road to Lost Lake. And the water on, the people receive along the Lost Lake has never been, it's never processed, it's never run through filters or anything else, it just goes out. And they measure it, and you know, it's fine. So, there's a lot of things that you begin to more understand, you know, what's going on, and you'll, it just, having that in the background may be useful, thinking about what do we need to do going forward. So, just recommend it if you have the time.
I have no update on the MS four permit or the policy styrene containers, Green Community application. So I think I updated this board that we were at twelve percent of the fifteen percent that we needed, and that Kelly had given us some options to get us up to the fifteen percent, which we instituted, we are now at fourteen point one percent. So. We're very, very close, and she gave us one more suggestion to look at to get us to that fifteen, so. I'm feeling good, Becky, because I know this is your your issue, I'm feeling really good, we are. Point nine away from the fifteen percent, so, they're working with us.
Based on that, in my household, if you could have a program at the middle school to show students how to turn lights off.
That would help.
That would help dramatically, we could reduce one percent townwide.
Alexis is working well on mine.
Just based on the teenagers. They would step it up.
But I'm feeling, we sent a lot of information last week.
Yep.
Yes, John?
No, I want to jump back quick to the MS four permit. Now, that's been turned over to the earth.
The Stormwater Committee.
Stormwater manager.
Yep.
Could we ask them, I I think through you, that by some date. You know, in the next few weeks, you know, they come up with some sort of a plan of how they're going to move through and and get us to a point where we make a decision?
I think that's a great idea, and I also had heard that in the. I think it was maybe in the supplementary budget or the extra budget that the legislature passed, there was. Funding for municipal vulnerability. Something, MVP.
Yeah, that's what we're working on right now.
I believe the planning board is working on.
Planning Board received a grant, and we are in the process of, next Thursday, I think you should also have been invited, did you get invitations to the thing at the senior center? On the, on the, from the planning board, they're having a a a public meeting, they invited stakeholders.
I haven't seen an invitation.
Oh.
What is, what's the public meeting about?
I don't know about that one.
Uh, it's, it's not me. The 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 planning board is working with their consultant, and they're having a meeting with stakeholders in town to finalize the. For the grant that we received, the twenty-two thousand dollar grant that we received, and there's a, there's a meeting.
The focus of what the grant is?
Correct.
What?
Put it, no, put it together, no, put it together our plan. Put together our our.
I think, I think based on the the confused expressions up here, if you can ask them to resend that to us.
Yes, I I I thought he invited some members of the board, did he not?
I'm not sure, I don't know who, I don't know which.
I didn't come up with this list.
It kind of rings a bell, but it it.
So that the MVP grant can, is, can't be applied to the cost of the MS four permit?
Allison, you should have received an invitation.
I think I did, it 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 rings a bell, but it's not.
I started, John, you should have received an invitation.
About.
And who else? That's it, just the two.
Allison is chair of the Select Board and John Riley.
As local emergency management committee.
MBTA advisory board.
Oh.
There you go!
I knew that was going to come.
But Becky, to answer your question, we are working on our plan, which would avail us, allow us rather, to apply for grant for that purpose. That's what I started to.
For the MS four permit, also?
No, the MVP, the the.
The MVP program.
The MVP thing that you were talking about.
Right, so I think I had heard.
That grant is aimed at preparation for dealing with climate change.
Yes, and and natural disasters and everything else.
And that can, money cannot be used for the MS four?
Yes, there are some aspects that can be used, yes, and that's what this whole planning process is for, we just resent you the invitation.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you going to send it to everybody or?
Well, the people who are on their invitation list.
Okay.
It doesn't pay for MP four.
No, it does not.
We may get some help studying that.
Well, for example, one of the things that that I wanted to focus on as part of this planning for climate change is, the town meeting appropriated forty-five thousand dollars to deal with some of the dredging. Of James Brook to help with the flooding down there.
Right.
I would like to expand that somehow. And do more, and do a better job, maybe a better culvert under the road or something like that. We can leverage that forty-five thousand dollars as our contribution towards a larger grant, if that, that's just, I'm just giving you an example of something that we can do. And that's part of the planning that we're going to be talking about and doing.
And having just spent an hour and a half or more on budgets. We haven't put anything in the budget out over five years thinking about how we're going to do MP four.
That's true, but the.
And we need to get to a point where we can.
Well, the the MS four, though, that's the purpose of the stormwater, to come back to you with a proposal on how to fund that, that's why it's not in the operating budget, it'll be a separate enterprise.
That funding.
It's going to come from the taxpayers, absolutely.
Right.
Yep, so we want to get to a point where we know what, or we have a hunch what to put in there, even if they're just placeholders.
Yep.
For for that event, it's going to happen, there's no way we're getting out of it.
I agree.
Just, as I've, as I've done some background reading on the iron and manganese thing, the MVP program has popped up in a few places where towns have been able to use. The MVP, some of the MVP money toward that climate resiliency.
Oh, wow.
Looking at kind of overdrawn well situations and water reduction and so.
So that has potential as well?
And to go back to the Green Communities.
Yes.
Should we be lucky enough to. Get the designation with the fourteen point one? The way to maximize our money from the state is to immediately start work on what we will apply for in their next grant cycle. The first one is automatic and they give you the amount that they calculate.
Yes. Yes.
But after that, you get only what you apply for. And so, we gotta be on the spot and apply.
We have a whole list of projects that we put in that we will have to refine as to what we would apply for and run to, so I'm with you on that.
Right, right.
So even though we don't know whether we're gonna get it, I- I, that's what I think I'm- I'm hearing, and I, is that the group that's looking at administrating it and- and kicking it off, still ought to be working on what we would ask for in the following year.
In the fall, correct. We have a whole list of projects.
Not wait until we find out whether we're gonna get it.
No, 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 we have a- we have a whole list, yeah, we have a whole list of projects in our application that would be eligible for future rounds. Because our first is like a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or something like that, right?
Two thousand, two hundred and something, but I'm not gonna be-
But we have a whole list of projects totaling millions of dollars that we can apply for. So we- we are doing what Becky's saying, what you're saying.
All right.
Absolutely. Florence Road Elementary School feasibility study, it's ongoing, the committee's meeting again next Tuesday, I believe, Allison?
Yes.
Library roof is done, I will get you the final accounting.
Wait, I don't know, last time I drove by there, which was over the weekend, there was still a ladder up on the top of the roof.
I think they were finalizing things, but they're very close to finishing it.
And there were three trucks there, and people were working on it, so I'm not sure.
We're keeping that ladder.
I believe we're gonna keep the ladder, for one point three million dollars, they're gonna give us a ladder.
Well, no, the scaffolding is only off on the front, it's not off on the back and the sides.
Yeah, they're finishing the rubber roof, but Bob Goside tells me it's just about done.
Okay.
And I'll get you a final accounting in that project. Highway garage renovations are ongoing, there's a lot, you're gonna be very pleased with what you see tomorrow. I'm having a walk-in with the building committee members tomorrow, John is- is there. So that project is- is ongoing, and I have no update on Pepperell. I would ask the board if you have any liaison reports or minutes, and then that should conclude a very lengthy, excellent meeting tonight.
I just wanna point out that I'm there tomorrow because I'm a member of the building committee.
Yes.
That's why I'm there.
The, the crosswalk streetlights are working at the middle school on nineteen.
You put it in?
I- I guess so.
Yeah, they were on today.
He said Thursday he had everything.
They're in, they're working, I saw the town guys.
The weather's been pretty good, the bases were already in, so that's super.
Great.
And even though that's outside my purview, as the MBTA liaison.
You can get the MBTA out here in Groton, you will deserve a commendation.
I'm not sure we want the MBTA out here in Groton.
I knew that MBTA.
I think right now, the biggest help you could be is just figure out how to keep the trains on the tracks.
Yeah, exactly.
We haven't had any derailments in Groton since I was-
Very true, you're doing a good job.
I assume we don't have any liaison reports?
No.
We do have one set of minutes from December sixteenth of our regular meeting.
I remember we approved them, but I have one correction to make. I wonder if any of you read this and caught this, but page two, near the top, in the third line, it says, oh. It says, "Miss Pines said, 'Well, it was bubbly of Mr. Deegan to volunteer.'"
It does say bubbly.
That's impressive.
I- I went back to watch the tape to see what the heck did I say. And I, it was hard to understand, I believe I said, "It was lovely of Mr. Deegan to volunteer."
I think we should leave it.
Not bubbly.
I think we should leave it exactly if-
I'll disagree.
Tasting the champagne.
Exactly. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second? I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, guys, we are adjourned.